All the here might given with the County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the County Justice Office Commissioners Courtroom at five seventy six West Main Street in Ramville, Texas, seven eight five eight zero on Thursday. December four twenty twenty four at ten AM for the purpose of discussing the following items, considering the course of the meeting, any discussion of any item, the agenda to be held in executive or closed session. Then Willis County Commissioners Court will convene such executive or closed session in accordance with section five five one point oh one of Texas Department Code. To any final action, final decision, final vote be required in the opinion of Willis County Commissioners Court in regards to any matter, consider such closer executive meeting or session. Then the final decision, final vote should be either an open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting. Or it's a frequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court upon notice thereof as the county shall determine. So with that, I'm calling the meeting to order. Let Chief Deputy Clerk do establish a form, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Preise one.
Uh huh.
Commissioner Preise two.
President.
Commissioner Preise three.
President.
Commissioner Preise four.
President.
I will count the judges. We do have.
Thank you. Please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Dear Lord, as we gather together during this holiday season, let us take a moment to appreciate the blessings we have and the connections we share. May our hearts be filled with gratitude, our discussions be fruitful, and our spirits be uplifted by the warmth of this special time. Amen.
Amen.
May be seated. We go to line item number four of public comments. And now we'll go to line item number five, the approval claims.
Who let the dog loose?
Good, that previously reviewed is moved to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve. Good night, entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I may say aye.
Aye.
And not opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number six, approval of previous minutes as follows, November fourteenth twenty twenty four, public hearing at nine AM, November fourteenth twenty twenty four, public hearing at nine thirty AM. November fourteenth twenty twenty four, regular meeting. November eighteenth twenty twenty four, special meeting. November nineteenth, emergency meeting. And November twenty five twenty twenty four, regular meeting. Action required.
Moved to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve. Double the second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I may say aye.
Aye.
And not opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number seven, Texas to provide monthly updates, and we do have a Texas representative, welcome.
Thank you. Morning, uh, morning sector sector, a project manager. So I'll be presenting on two projects today. Uh, one is fourteen twenty FM fourteen twenty five. And on that one, it's currently working. Um, they have milled all the roadway and so the full roadway and now they're starting to work on the line creating the subgrade. So it's still in the initial stages. And then on the other project that we're working on currently is also on FM four ninety. On FM four ninety, right now, what we're doing, we did hot mix yesterday at the intersection of FM ten fifteen and FM four ninety. And then today, we should be working on the intersection on FM four, uh, on FM four ninety eighty, FM eighty eight. So the other side. Um, currently, those are the two projects that we're working on. And, um, I guess if you all have any other questions regarding to.
On, uh, on the intersection of four ninety, you, you have some temporary, uh, lights.
Yes.
I, I don't know if I can check if they're actually working properly. The, uh, red light on the, uh, on this side. It just, I mean, it just wouldn't change. It wouldn't change. And I noticed because I was behind two other cars.
Okay.
And they literally had to, you know, pass on the red light.
Correct.
So you could just check it out.
Where, but where's your intersection?
On four ninety and ten fifteen.
Uh huh.
And, and thank you, um, for that information because I know these are new systems. They're called that systems. And of course, uh, you know, a lot of times instead of having a personnel out there, you know, you have these which serve as the intersection light. So it serves its purpose, but again, if there's any glitches or anything that needs to be improved, uh, what.
This was on Friday night that we were coming in from Oreo and I go through there to get to ninety twenty one and, uh, like I said, it was, it was kind of lateish in the afternoon, maybe about seven thirty, eight o'clock. There's no workers out there no more. So I'm not sure if it was stuck or the timer or something was off, but caught for passing on the way there.
Okay. And that's really good feedback. Uh, so I'll definitely address, uh, bring it up to them and like I did to make any adjustments.
And on four ninety, just east of eighty eight, where they did a crossing a couple of weeks ago. The, when they put that temporary asphalt, it's kind of rough.
Yes.
If, if, if someone hits it, they're going seventy miles an hour, it can cause an accident.
Okay, so, um, it's on four ninety on intersection near.
No, no, intersection east of eighty eight.
East.
Just where they, where the canal is about a mile away from the eighty eight, but it's where they, uh, did that, uh.
Crossing.
Crossing, yes.
Okay.
That, that when they refilled it, I guess, uh, it is sunk or something happened, but it's kind of rough, kind of dangerous.
Yes, uh, on that one, uh, the cutting resource sometimes, uh, it's not as far, but since they're doing hot mix, uh, at the intersections, maybe they could add some.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to smooth it out.
Smooth it out, yes.
Mr. Stateless, since you've had a mention that the milling is complete on fourteen twenty five?
Yes.
East down, I'm sorry, north and south?
Correct.
Or the east lane and the west lane?
The full roadway.
So when can we expect to, to get the call from Mr. Champion about the allotment?
And so right now, they compiled all the, I guess, millings and they're gonna take measurements. And once they find out the total measurements, they'll see how much the county, uh, I guess, will be allocated for y'all. So I could reach out, I guess, a little bit to Tim, uh, just to get a better, I guess, timeline for y'all. Okay.
Yeah, this, next week will be a, a good week. And then of course, the following week will be a little tough for the holidays. So I think all of us are wanting to.
Yes.
It's anxiously waiting.
And especially because the longer it sits, the drier it gets. And right now, if it's still fresh, you know, it's, it's more usable for us.
Got it.
Maybe I'll reach out to you later today to see what you find out.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate y'all.
Have you ever. Go to line item number eight, presentation. We're just getting a session of the end of the year in interpretation.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
In your packets, you should have a copy of our annual report. It's about five or six pages. Um, just kind of wanted to go over it with y'all. Just the way the holidays fell this year, um, our interpretation this year, we'll, we'll do it in court. But, um, as always, just thank you for supporting extension activities throughout the year. Um, we run on a fiscal year and extension, so this is our end of the year report covering from September, all the, September twenty twenty three to August twenty twenty four. Um, so I just wanted to go over some of our big highlights from last year, um, and some of the programs that, that were held here in the county. Um, we had a beef and forage production program last fall, um, and a, uh, uh, hay production management, uh, program as well. And, um, on your, um, on your annual report, you'll see some of the numbers from the results of surveys that we do at each of those programs. So we had a hundred percent of producers that would economically benefit from those two programs. And ninety seven percent of them will change or adopt a management practice that would help benefit their operations. Um, on the row crop production side, um, I had a, um, a variety trial with one of the local cooperators here just east of Raymondville. And, um, we planted regular, uh, conditions, harvested, took that data. And then we presented it at a meeting that we had this past November, um, to local farmers, um, just on those grain sorting varieties and, uh, helping them make better, uh, decisions for next year. Then we had our annual five hour CEU class that we'll have again in late January. And then, uh, in a multi-county aspect, we had a thirtieth annual cotton and grain producers pre-plant conference. We had a good chunk of Willacy producers there as well, and that was held in my house. Um, on, with Ronnie, my counterpart, he was busy at a program today, but, um, he, uh, spearheaded some programs as well here in the, in the county. Um, he has two major plans, the environmental agricultural, uh, program and the livestock management program. He had a weed and brush, uh, control and forage management program, uh, water resources management program, and we tested eight water wells in the county. Uh, we screened them for, um, fecal coliform, um, oil and hydrocarbons. And we were able to give, um, people their results back on any kind of, um, further testing that they may need on their water wells on their property. And, um, and we also partnered up with some programs as well. On the livestock management side, um, we had our beef cattle, uh, management program. And a beef cattle nutrition workshop, um, last fall. And then, uh, we had an external and internal parasite workshop, um, in the spring. And, um, on the four H and youth development side, it's always busy there, but, um, our main, or my main three program areas with the youth here in the county. Are livestock judging, general A and R, and then leadership and development. Uh, the livestock judging, we have, um, practices once a month. And, um, we had sixteen kids who are active throughout the year and they learn just the basics of, um, livestock judging. And then they also, there is a speaking portion of that as well, and they learned up taking. Um, on the general A and R side, we have our annual, annual youth, um, youth ag day at the county fair. We had over five hundred, uh, third, third, kinder through third graders and adults that participated in the youth ag day. And then we got our shooting sports program started last year and, um, we had thirteen, or sorry, we had eleven practices. And, uh, last year we had about seven active members. This year we have about twelve active members in, just in that program area. And then, um, premiums and scholarships brought in about forty six thousand dollars to, um, just over twenty, uh, four H members here in the county. And then on the leadership and development side, in the summer, we're always busy doing leadership events. And, um, we recognize them earlier in the year, but, um, we had two state, uh, winners, one in record book and one in educational presentation. And our record book winner just came back from Washington DC and had a really good positive experience there. And, uh, we're just continuing to grow more on the leadership and development side with public speaking and educational presentations, things like that. So. That's my portion, uh, for me and Ronnie's, and Megan will go over herself and Perla's, but just thank you very much and.
Okay, so for the next two portions, I'm gonna present for Perla. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it with us. She's actually out of the program in Zapata. Um, so for family, community health, um, in her healthy living and adult youth nutrition education, these are programs that also comprise of. Cooking well with diabetes, cooking well for healthy blood pressure, um, dinner tonight cooking school, uh, where both Commissioner Garcia and Gera participated. Um, she had an educational context of eight hundred and eighty nine and total educational hours of a thousand nine hundred and fifty six. Um, addition to that, in her exercise adult in youth nutrition, she had, uh, programs that increase physical activity opportunities in education such as step up, uh, scale down, walk across Texas. She had educational contacts of a thousand six hundred and ninety four and then total education hours of two thousand nine hundred and ninety eight. And then last, she wanted to highlight her, um, learn, grow, eat, go teacher training program. She partnered up with Lyford N. Uh, Raymondville ISDs to train their teachers on the ten week curriculum of LGEG, which is learn, grow, eat, go. Um, this is a research-based education, and so a total of ten teachers participated in order to disseminate that program within those two educational schools. Um, so that's for family, community health. Uh, for myself, I do community and economic development. Um, one of my major highlights this year was my business and development academy, which was hosted with partners out of Brownsville, Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. They committed ten thousand dollars to the program in order to, uh, provide lunches, store prizes. This program is specifically for small business owners that are looking to get hub certified through the state of Texas. Um, what it does is it allows them to go through a seven to nine week intensive curriculum where they're able to get the education needed to go for government contracting. Um, so this past year, we held it in Brownsville. Um, they were our partners. We had twenty seven small businesses complete the intensive, uh, training. All twenty seven firms are now active on the hub list, um, and they're able to do, uh, active bidding through that, uh, state of Texas. Um, and then addition to that, we have our youth entrepreneurship program. I partnered up with Lyford Middle School After School Program. This is a program where we use a venture lab curriculum where they're able to teach them how to start a business, talk to them about entrepreneurship. Um, so we had fifteen students complete that. That was a five week course that we participated there in Lyford, so it was really cool to see. Uh, we had two judges judge a firm and, um, the little girls here in the corner, one, they called themselves the besties cafe. And so they were wanting to open up their local coffee shop, um, and also give back to the community. So it was a really good, uh, experience. And then last but not least, my other big program is our financial literacy and furniture program. Uh, previously, you all have assisted with this program. Um, each precinct has provided manpower for us to do that. So what happens is, uh, we go through a three week session of financial literacy. We had twenty families participate this past year, um, where they get education on financial literacy, better practices on how to use their money, manage their money. And then from there, they get funneled into our furniture program, which allows them to get vouchers through the university to purchase, um, beds, bed frames, uh, you know. Whatever it is furniture wise, no appliances. But, um, so we had twenty families complete that. We had the education happening here at the library. And then we worked with the Willacy County, um, the safe authority where we distributed the, the furniture there. And each precinct provided, uh, manpower to help me unload the trailer because I can't do it myself. Um, and so I'm really thankful for you all to help me. And that way, we will continue the program. Our agency still has about forty thousand dollars, um, influence to, to disseminate this program. So this coming year, I will have another forty vouchers for forty family members, um, in the later part of my fiscal year. Then I will, uh, start doing the education component for this program, and then it will funnel into the furniture after they completed the education portion. Um, so really happy to bring in more resources, um, to Willacy County. And whatever you all need, let me know, I'm here. And as, as all our extension agents are, and if there are any questions, we can answer them at this time.
Uh, we attended a conference on, um, on Friday.
That's Friday.
It was really cool. I, I think those, part of the highlight was that, you know, we get to read some of the, the things that y'all are actually doing. And what I liked about it was that there was other communities out there, things like that. And, and, you know, you, y'all are there, or you share the pictures, but these are our guys.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of cool out there. So good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for participating and attending. That really helps us too. It just kind of, you get to learn about the other different programs that extension has. And so if there are any programs that you saw that you want us to bring here, please reach out to our office and, you know, we'll try our best to kind of get those going up here in Willacy County.
Are you still working with the loan?
I am. Um, I, I didn't include those numbers, but, um, I still am doing FSA loans and I still do the USDA five oh two, five oh four loans. Um, real briefly, just about that, the USDA five oh four loans are the, um, to redo your house. So if you're over the age of sixty two, you can qualify up to a ten thousand dollar grant to modify, reconstruct your house, um, to make it handicap accessible. Um, if you're, um, you're still eligible for the forty thousand dollars, that's forty thousand dollars at a one percent interest rate through USDA. Um, what I'm doing now is I do have partners within the community that help me package these loans, um, and then they get sent to USDA and then the processing gets. Um, and then they get sent to USDA, and then the processing gets done. On the five oh-two side, the five oh-two is to build or buy a house. Uh, the whole Willacy County does qualify, um, and so they are at a lower interest rate, um, based off of, uh, your credit. Um, but they are a really flexible program, and so you can finance for thirty-three years on that program. And you can build, um, on a house up to, believe the, the max was about three eighty-two, the last that I saw. Those numbers are going up, um, so that's to build or buy. If there's something existing already, they can, as long as they get pre-approved through my office, through USDA, they can, you know, work on the process of getting that house built. Um, this past year, on the five oh-four side, I had fifty-five applicants go through and get. So yesterday, I actually just finalized that report, and the numbers were, um, in total that qualified, it was one point six million. And then, um, in grant-wise, we had about three hundred and seventy-two, uh, individuals get grants to fix those houses. That's across Willacy County only. Um, the five oh-two, I'm barely, we're barely starting to do, uh, more work in it, just because previously they would just get sent to USDA. Uh, the loan officer would take care of it. Now we will be doing prescreening here in the county. Um, so they'll get prescreened here at my office, and then they go to the next steps with the USDA loan officer. Um, on the FSA side, uh, I believe I had this past year, uh, five point eight million in FSA loans. And so that comprises of your microloan, your direct loan, and your operating loan. Those are for agriculture operations only. Um, those numbers though are three counties wide. So I'm the only one here in extension that's doing those FSA loans. So, um, I'm doing, actually it's four counties wide. I did Starr, Willacy, Cameron, and Hidalgo. So, um, that's why that number is so large. Um, but yeah, if there's anybody that has, uh, wants more information on any of those loans of our programs that are still being offered here. Um, and then, uh, if, if I'm not available, I will send you to a resource that is available.
And do you have a certain date you'll take for those?
Uh, right now I don't. What, what I just do is it's appointment-based, just because I am dual appointment now. So I do work, uh, three days near Willacy, two days in Cameron County. So, um, just call the office and, and schedule an appointment, just to make sure that I'm available, and then we'll proceed with what's next.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Very good. I have my, is your menu now?
Okay.
Whatever you have right here.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll put you on our, our email list as well.
For our newsletter.
Yeah, because I, I don't know if you all changed it or not, but that's my menu.
Okay.
Because I left that on there.
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. And enjoy your goodies. We brought you some.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
We will.
Line item number nine, discussion action, transfer, bring surplus items and funds from constable precinct three to the district attorney's office, action required. Constable Ben Vera, Constable Ben Vera.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, this, you know, wind down twenty-eight years of serving as your constable for Willacy County. I just want to thank you and all of y'all had added to my success in my office. And I really appreciate you, every one of you, working with each and every one of you. It's been a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful career being the constable. Hopefully I won't be going too far, but as your constable, man, we appreciate everything the county has, has done for me in my office. So what I'm here today is, I'm here to, we have some surplus items, um, that, uh, request to be transferred over to the district attorney's office. Um, I will continue, uh, with the district attorney. And, uh, I'm asking to transfer, uh, one cell phone, one portable wifi, uh, device, uh, one portable radio, and some surplus emergency lighting. Uh, at this time, the new truck, uh, that the county purchased for the constable's office in precinct three, it's ready, gonna be ready to go day one. So it's nothing other than video. I know that video was a, was a over expense. So there is no video in the truck, but there is a, I will be turning in a, a body cam that, that is working.
Constable Vera, I, I, I see the line item here. Uh, it's, but is it a typo? Are you talking about, uh, precinct three, or are you talking about for precinct two?
No, precinct three. There's a typo. That's a typo.
Okay. Um, I don't, would that be an issue, Mr. Hozan?
Uh, not necessarily. Uh, I, I would want there to be though, and I'm sure the auditor would want it to be, uh, more clear on what item and like a VIN number or serial number on the item because of the fact that you have to transfer from, it's not just, um, a transfer physical, it's a transfer on the books. So I think that.
Yeah, and I think you have gotten that right, Ben.
Right.
But we just need to.
Well, the items that are, I have my list from Becky to be turned in.
Your inventory?
Yes.
To be turned in?
Yes. This is just surplus old lights and stuff that are, that are still workable, but, but I can get some, uh, model numbers and some numbers and turn those in.
Just so we know.
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
And it stays on record that, you know, I will transfer to their office.
Okay. Or just a description?
Also, there were some funds left over for training from the constable's office in precinct three. I want to see like the who goes over to the district attorney's office for training.
That would be.
And the comptroller.
Oh, the comptroller?
Mm-hmm. I have like three thousand in there.
Okay, I'd have to look at that and, and let you know, and then bring.
Yeah, and Commissioner, this is basically started with some other constables that either had resigned or whatever, or they didn't qualify to stay as constables, you know, probably historically. And so when this arrived about turning in their equipment and, you know, including weapons, it was like, you know, we didn't want to handle weapons, like at, at the judge's office as an example. So back then, uh, the decision was made to, to, to DA kind of be the one that, um, gets the, the equipment of law enforcement. In this case, a constable, right? And, and I think it's worked out. If you agree with me, it's enough.
Absolutely. We, we keep track of it. Uh, it's not, it's transferred into my office physically, but it's not necessarily transferred into my office, uh, on the books, but for the department inventory, so we just kind of keep it separate.
And also a bulletproof vest and a carrier, because Mr. Siphs is a smaller frame. He's gonna need it is. He'll probably come visit with the offer, so.
So that would be, this is part of the equipment?
Yes.
The, the funds will have to come back and look at it?
Yep. Uh, Karen will have to check to see what the allowable's are on for that. Since it's a different, sorry, Ms. Ms. Karen.
No, it's fine.
It's a different, uh, it's, it's not funding from, from the, from the county. It's funding from a, from an agency.
So, Constable, since you're here, the, the budget that the new constable will inherit is, it's, it's still at a hundred percent, or?
Only uniforms. I purchased some, uh, needed pants and, uh, yes.
Minor amount. Yeah.
Everything else isn't, I know, I know fuel, but I haven't, I haven't really used that much fuel. But other than that, everything is dirt.
Do you retain motions, Judge?
Yes, sir.
Uh, make the motion to, to transfer the surplus item and.
Not funds.
Not funds. Items and from Constable Precinct Three to the District Attorney's Office, uh, pending a, pending the, uh, serial numbers or descriptions.
Yeah, yeah, the motion.
Second.
Motion, the first second, the motion, let's see, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I'm a say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Line item number ten, discussion next, is cut proposal for Scott Merriman Incorporated to scan and index the remainder of office file for the, uh, Willacy County District Clerk's office, action required. Commissioner, what, what this is, is as you know, we approved through ARPA, um, funding to be able to do what's basically required to do in both the county clerk and district clerk. Uh, you know, we entertained back then different companies. One was overwhelmingly high. And so we went with this particular company now. What, what happened was that they did, uh, take boxes of files and, and, uh, and it's working out. However, uh, the task is not completed. The, the amount of monies that were allocated have already been used up. So the question was by this company, do you want us to consider doing the rest, or do you want us to bring it back? So my, in, in talking to the district clerk, uh, is that it would be wise for us to consider to be able to tap into, uh, other funding and let's complete this task. We have to do it anyway, whether it's now or later. And I think we're in a position where we could do it now. Moreover, the funds are already with him, with, with this company. So, uh, what, what I'm asking is that we consider, uh.
Do we have a more or less?
Yes, we do. Let me see if it's in here. I think it's, I want to say it's sixty-seven.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Or sixty-four.
Yeah.
Sixty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think what we allocated, uh, this is a green number from ARPA.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-five is what?
No, sixty.
Oh, sixty. Sixty. And I said, yes, Commissioner, we, we, we need it. Because, uh, what's, what's also happening is that I, I don't want to bring the funds back, in other words. Because, uh, we're gonna wind up probably in South Stand and that building. And then we're gonna have, uh, a bigger task. And the more important part is that we're looking at it in other, uh, areas and projects, that the cost just keeps going higher and higher.
So move to approve the proposal, Scott Merriman Incorporated, to scan and index the remainder of the office file for Willacy County District Clerk's office?
Second.
From capitals to?
Uh, to get the, the cost from, uh, fund two?
Second amendment, second.
Okay, put fund two. I have a motion amended first, and a motion amended second. Discussion, all in favor, sign if I'm a say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. On all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number eleven, discussion approval of proclamation, uh, to recognize January twenty twenty-five as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month and place royal blue ribbons of trees on Willacy County Courthouse. Action required.
Good morning. Um, Latif Muniz, uh, what's the, you guys were victim advocates with the victim assistance unit. Um, we hope y'all are doing well today. Uh, Gloria did want to, uh, mention Judge, she wanted to give her thanks for attending the Tree of Angels ceremony on Monday. But unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here this morning. Um, but we're here once again to present, present the, uh, National Human Trafficking Proclamation. Um, if approved, we will be having, uh, the Human Trafficking Awareness Day on January tenth. Um, that day will consist of, uh, different speakers from different, uh, agencies. And also there will be lectures that are going to be disseminating in, information out to the public. Um, we're going to be having it at the safe room, uh, from nine AM to twelve PM, uh, that day. So we will be having, uh, also a survivor that's going to be coming in to speak on her experience rewriting, you know, what she endured during her trafficking. Um, so, so we will be presenting the proclamation to us.
Okay. Whereas the United States was founded on the principle that all people are born with unalienable right to freedom, yet millions of people worldwide are victims of human trafficking. During National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, we acknowledge that forms of slavery still exist in the modern era. And we, we commit ourselves to stopping the human traffickers who play this horrific trade. And whereas we continue our fight to deliver on the promise of freedom, we commemorate the Emancipation Proclamation, which became effective on January first, eighteen sixty-three, and the Thirteenth Amendment, which was sent to the states for verification on February first, eighteen sixty-five. Throughout the month of January twenty twenty-five, we highlight the many fronts in the ongoing battle for civil rights, including the efforts of the Willacy County District Attorney's Office Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas and the Rio Grande Valley Anti-Human Trafficking Coalition, which is comprised, which is comprised of federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies, prosecutors, victim service agencies, and social service providers in Willacy County who are working to end human trafficking. And whereas the victims of human trafficking are men, women, adults, and children, yet are all denied basic human dignity and freedom. Victims can be abused in their own countries and find themselves far from home and vulnerable. Whether they are trapped in forced sexual or labor exploitation, human trafficking victims cannot walk away, but are held in service through force, threats, and fear. All too often suffering from horrible physical and sexual abuse, it is hard for them to imagine that there might be a place of refuge. Whereas we must join together as community in Willacy County to provide the safe haven by protecting victims and prosecuting traffickers with improved victim identification, medical and social services, training for first responders, and increased public awareness, the men, women, and children who have suffered this scourge can overcome the bonds of modern slavery, receive protection and justice, and successfully reclaim their rightful independence. Whereas fighting of human trafficking is shared responsibility. This month, we all, we urge all Willacy County residents to educate themselves about all forms of modern slavery and the signs and consequences of human trafficking. Together, we can and must end this most serious ongoing criminal civil rights violation. Now therefore, the county of Willacy proclaims January twenty twenty-five as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month and calls upon the people of the Willacy County to recognize the vital role we can play in ending human trafficking and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities, and to recognize the vital role we can play in ending human trafficking.
Also to approve that.
Second.
A second, a commission, a final discussion. All in favor, sign if I'm a say aye.
Aye.
Now the post.
And as Gloria always says, um, she did send her, her items that she always gives off for, as a thank you for approving the proclamation as well. So we hope to see y'all out there that day on the awareness thing.
I, I always tell her, I want. So if she, did y'all get a cross kids ribbon?
No, she did remember to send the ribbons as well. So that way y'all can wear them the month of January.
Thank you.
And thank y'all again for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Line item number twelve, discussion to approve in a SIP, uh, non-monetary donation for the ten eighty-two domestic violence silent. Silent walk. Action required.
Yeah, John, this, sorry. Do you have this?
Um, well, I have.
Okay, you, you can describe this.
Um, I think we had two donations that were given by, um, MTC, uh, which was two sandwich trays and some fruit trays. And just strategic spark RGV from, uh, they were two packages of water. Those are the donations that we received. Oh, and then, uh, I think it was those two.
I believe what we did was we included the letter that we send out in case any sponsors want to do some non-monetary donations. And then we're keeping track of these, um, what we've, what, what I think that we'll probably do is, is submit one like quarterly for like all of the events over a course of a period, but we just wanted to show you that that's what, what we'll submit to you all to. And then, of course, we want to thank the people that are doing that, so we do thank MTC and Jennifer Gonzalez's spark, uh, she's the spark.
Yes.
So we do thank them for, for supporting those, those events and those causes. Uh, we want to make sure we recognize them as well, Judge.
Sure. Right pretty soon.
Yes, thank you to those, uh, agencies and entities.
Thank you so much.
And Judge, and just to know, I don't believe it requires approval, because you'd already approved, uh, allowing us to, to do that. It's just to, uh, just to make the report to you.
Thank you.
So my body, they shouldn't have said action.
So we're on thirteen, right?
Yeah.
Twelve. Number four.
I mean, you have the action there, Judge. You can, you can approve to accept the awards, and we've already.
Get into the motion to accept the non-monetary. Motion by Commissioner De Hidena. Continue a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner. Discussion. All in favor, signature if I pass any eye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number thirteen, discussion and approval of Kroger settlement as part of a Kroger opioid settlement approved and entered into on December twentieth of twenty twenty one. Action required.
Judge, this is the commissioners, some of you may have been here in twenty twenty, I think everybody was here in twenty twenty one. We, Commissioners Court approved entering into the larger settlement agreement that the Texas Attorney General's Office had reached with a larger jurisdiction, not the jurisdictions, but the larger entities. We've previously already accepted and been part of those participation forms is what they call them, to participate in the settlement. I believe the amount for the Kroger settlement is something approximately, I didn't bring that one paper with me, is a little over a one thousand eight hundred dollars that comes to Willacy County. And it's for the use of combating opioid issues in addiction. Crime, anything that falls under that for the county. So what it requires is before December the twenty ninth is the county to accept, to participate, and approve the Kroger settlement. Essentially, you're participating in that as well until you have the form before you if you are inclined to do so. We've already accepted and participated with three other. I'm going to say business entities that also sell this type of drug on the market. In Judge's participation form, I think I already sent it. Yes, Judge, you would sign that. So that way then I'll give Cassie the information on who to send it back to. I have all that.
All right, thank you. Line number fourteen, discussion and action to approve grant administration service between Willacy County Grant Works Inc. for Texas Coastal Management Program Cycle Twenty Nine, Contract Number twenty four zero nine nine zero one zero E five forty six. Action required.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. So we're ready to begin the second phase of the Fred Stone Park Upgrade Projects. Grant Works continues to be our administrator. However, due to some of the, I guess, the time that when we disengaged from fulcrum, then when with Mont McDonald and so forth, it's taken longer than what, you know, we expected. But this is so that Grant Works can continue to administer the project. And I did forward it to Mrs. Yvonne Rosal, for you.
It's essentially the same contract that you've already considered before. It's just a different project.
The only, yes, the only, she's correct on that. The only thing is, of course, we are going to have to procure for an engineer. And then also you do also have the deliverables that are listed on page fourteen, which is, we're hoping that, you know, we don't have to change those deliverable dates for the events of the entire project.
And I did have a question on the engineer, Judge, because we have a list of engineers that we've used in the past. So I don't know if that's a requirement that Grant Works is requiring, that it be a separate engineer?
No.
Or if it be the engineering services that you all already have?
No, we, the agency, we have to, again, we have to procure an engineer. Please keep in mind that we do have that shortlist that we refer to from the Texas General Land Office, and Mont McDonald is part of that shortlist. What we just completed successfully was the redesign, actually the design, because fulcrum engineering did not really provide anything. So Mont McDonald is the, you know, this last meeting that we had with the GLO. It could be, you know, that at that time, Mont McDonald, when they communicated that they may not show interest in continuing in the project. But it may be that if we do procure again, when we do the RFQs, that they may. Because a lot of times, as you already know, Judge, we had this discussion, is that if an engineer, most engineers don't want to work off the plan.
Yes, no, I know. It throws our wrench in any project when it's having to do with either a different engineer or even a different employee within an agency that is re-designated. You know, but nonetheless, we have to work with whatever situation we have on hand. And so that's, this is one of them.
Yes, sir.
So the question I have, right now, we're not talking about engineers, we're talking about.
Administries.
Continuing Grant Works.
With Grant Works, yes, sir.
Okay, did we have to go up for RFQs again, or did we have to go up for a whole list of some of you to do this, or this is just a continuation with them?
Yes, it is a continuation with Grant Works. And I do know, Ms. Yvonne Rosal, is there anything in there that?
Did something expire, or is that why we're going back out to this, or?
I believe the deadline has.
We have to let go of fulcrum.
And so it.
It's like two years ago. Yeah.
But it created a delay in the deadline of closing out the project. So it extended that project.
Yeah, we have to get a lot of extensions.
Yeah, it extended the project.
The delay that happened with fulcrum.
So this isn't the one, the project, and I'm sorry, just for first of my memory, we scored some engineers for one of your coastal projects over there about a year ago, you didn't have to go. Is this part of that, was?
No.
You're referring to cycle twenty six?
I don't know, just asking, did you score them?
Again.
But it's not part of this.
Okay, that's all I wanted, right?
Right, and what. So what's happening here is that due to the disengagement of that contract, this project, again, has taken much longer than even the agency was hoping. And therefore, the design of the park was picked up by the shortlist that there, well, I refer to it as the shortlist, but these are engineers that are already procured with the GLO. Therefore, we did not have to go out for any procurement, right? That was cycle twenty six. And then we also were awarded cycle twenty eight. So it may be that you're referring to cycle twenty eight, because if you recall, Judge, there was one that we were also invited to participate. But because this project was taking longer than expected, Commissioner, we were not considered. Even this project here, the funding is with separate, it's not even with CMP funding, it's with GOMISA funding from the state level. But if you would feel more comfortable to learn more about the RFQ, then I don't know if it would be wise, right? I mean, I, that we could, I could bring it presented again before you on the thirtieth of December.
Well, this is the first that I heard about it when I read it. That's why I was looking at it. And to be honest with you, since we are on the Grant Works topic, I do want to have a meeting with the judge and others on some other clarifications that I want with Grant Works, dealing with Grant Works. I think I have the most projects that they're dealing with.
Right.
And I want to have a meeting with you about, you know, with Grant Works, about this to get some clarification that I need.
Yes.
Especially on some, another upcoming project that would be commingled with.
I would invite you though, at this time, and I do, you know, I don't know what time the packets go out, you know, for your review, so, you know, we could, I always want to be very prepared and to answer your questions. But if you look under Task One Deliverables, this is on page fourteen, the executed grant administrator contract or subcontractor one due date eleven one twenty four. So it's just a kind reminder to the court that we're already, you know, as far as the timeline goes, a little bit behind.
So we're already over a month behind, so I think I'd like to wait to see, to see what we haven't seen, what's reviewed.
Read your what, sir?
Like we already.
She already reviewed it.
Ms. Yvonne Rosal, are you good with it?
I mean, again, I review the contract for the purposes, I think the questions you have are completely different from whether or not the contract is okay. I think the questions you have are, what's, it sounds to me like the questions that you have are more of, what's the timing on it, like, are we, are we like on track, or like, why are we extending it? Why do we have the contract? I don't, I'm not privy to that information. I only have the information for the contract. So, I mean, the contract in and of itself is a good legal contract for the purposes of what it's needed for. But your questions are, why do we need to, I think more go to, why do we need to have it extended?
Yeah, why do we need to?
What has been done, or what, well, how is it done? Right, so that's kind of a little different than what.
Yeah, so as far as the extension of the project is, as I have explained, and Judge is aware, and Commissioner De Hidena is actually the commissioner that, you know, the POC exists following your precinct. Is due to the fact that we had to disengage from the first engineer. And therefore, you know, it had to be redesigned. There was a lot of also discussions with the GLO as far as the cost of the project.
And was it redesigned?
It was completely designed. We, actually fulcrum hadn't really provided much to go on.
It was designed by?
Yes, sir, Mont McDonald. They were the same ones that we also applied for capital funding for the shoreline, but we were not awarded that opportunity, which Commissioner De Hidena followed up with me on various times, because I do understand that that's also something that, you know, needs to be looked at.
And to your question about fulcrum, that one, they were disengaged in the, April fourteenth, twenty twenty three is when I sent out that letter to Terminated Services.
Yes, ma'am.
So they were terminated.
Yes, ma'am.
Nonetheless, so this is to approve Grant Works as a grant administrator.
Administrator and manager.
On cycle twenty nine.
Yes, sir.
All right, and this is part of what's required for us to be able to move forward on that particular project.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, you want to, you want us to look into that as to whether or not, because it seems to me that maybe you're.
Well, I think it was explained that I would just, I just want to make sure we don't beat the head of ourselves and didn't have to go out for bid, I guess. Again, we're not, it doesn't sound like we are. I mean, I'm different, Commissioner De Hidena's guidance on that.
We have a, we have the deadline, and we're a month behind, right, so far?
Yes, sir.
The only thing I would say overall, right, as a blanket comment, is that on this particular project, right, it fell in cycles, right? Cycle twenty nine, whatever, started with a pier, then cycle and so forth. And to me, and we already had, I just made the comment about changing players in the middle of the game, and that happened with fulcrum, right? And to me, it's just a matter of whether or not we're in guidance and compliance within our own guidelines as a county, and also within the guidelines of the grant itself. If so, and then I strongly suggest that we continue to keep the same players. Now, in fulcrum situation, it was public, it was not that we wanted to change, that we were in essence forced to change because there was no documents that were being provided. So.
Several opportunities for you.
Now making that comment is that Grant Works is a big, a big company, and I know we're utilizing them in so many different projects, including the Orders Commission. And there is, should I say, so many different personalities within the organization.
And they continue to change, is the other thing.
Yes, sir, sometimes it gets frustrating.
It's not only that, you know, it's also some of the funding agencies, they're changing personnel.
Yes.
So that's kind of, that was my concern, but it doesn't sound like it would affect this. We can always deal with my situation.
And then the other, not to say that this happened in this particular project, or even in the ones that you're involved with, is that sometimes we go up for RFQs for administration that applies. So anyway, we're in that deadline.
What I'm saying is that this should fall under professional services that would exempt them from an RFQ, and then it's under fifty thousand.
This is not an RFQ, this is an.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is that an exemption come back. As far as the RFQ question.
A lot of times the agency requires us to do that. Especially, you know, I know that we may have to do none of that, just hire someone.
Correct.
So if you ever die, that's okay.
Yes, sir.
No, it's just to allow to continue Grant Works with the cycle twenty nine.
So that's your word?
Mm-hmm.
What do you want?
Second by Commissioner De Hidena, any more discussion? All in favor, signature if I pass any eye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number fifteen, discussion act to approve cooperative agreement with Food Bank of the Rio Grande Valley Food Distribution is set for December nineteenth, twenty twenty four at the South Town Community Center for South Town.
This is, we do this monthly, we've been doing this in September, it's a huge success. Serve a lot of, a lot of community in South Town, appreciate four people that have come by. This is going to be the last one of the year. I think we had four in September now. We continue this for another, another entity there in South Town that couldn't accommodate anymore, you know, luckily we do have the center middle. And it's basically, it's not necessarily, it's an agreement that we have, basically, that it's a discussion act to approve the Food Bank of the Rio Grande Valley for the distribution of food on December nineteenth at the Sebastian Community Center. It's not per se written agreement or anything like that. If you're entertaining.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
I'll say just. And I'm watching by Commissioner, second by Commissioner. I'll make a comment, Commissioner, that I think, you know, I support the decision that you made about getting involved in this. Moreover, is that the community center itself is the reason why we engaged in having one. Yes, I think it fits right in. We don't have the community.
We wouldn't have had the center, we wouldn't have been able to serve all these hundreds of people.
Yes.
I think it's, the Food Bank there at the safe room, they come in, it's a lot of them, it's pretty, I mean, a lot of communities.
We have a motion, it's second, any more discussion? All in favor, signature if I pass any eye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number sixteen, discussion act to approve change order. Oh, pleasure. Discussion act to approve change order number two and change order number three of the Texas Water and Development Board, FIM, project four zero one zero one, Sebastian East Drainage. And change order number three has a change in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-four fair participants. Action required.
Judge, these are, this is going to be one of my, one of our projects in South Town to improve street improvement and drainage, to change existing, in this case, a non-existing road that we had to clear out and put in a curb and gutter system. Unfortunately, there was some unforeseen sewer issues that were in place that we didn't know about. So we had to fix it. It's a small amount of change order, but you know, just something I didn't know, we're beginning. Change order is nothing but another word for more money. So it's going to affect us to that. The good part is, we're still well within budget of that one. So.
What's your move?
Yeah. Second.
And I'm watching by Commissioner, second by Commissioner De Hidena. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature if I pass any eye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number seventeen, discussion act to approve a change order number six for Texas Water and Development Board, number four zero one zero one, Sebastian West Street and drainage improvements in the amount six thousand dollars. uh, Sebastian West Street and drainage improvements in the amount six thousand dollars and eighty-four, I mean, six thousand eighty-four and eighty-eight cents. Action required.
Once again, and, uh, this is the west side of that same project, four zero one, zero one, a completely different contractor than East. Uh, once again, we, we, we had this change order, and we, we're trying to bring it in front of the court that way, we're, we're being as transparent as possible, because like I said, it adds up to more money. But once again, this is a little bit, it's not as significant as some of the others. But then, we're still within budget, but we're not getting off, we're getting close.
Uh, so move to approve. I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sia. And on that, I'll make another comment, is that I took a drive over there last week, Commissioner, and I think they're, they're, they're going to be nice. Um, you, you know, the, the, like you say, right, new streets, eventually, they need attention, right? At some point, and I consider that, uh, you already tapping into the streets that I put in place, they were new back then, and you tore one up, you know, to improve it, and I think it's going to come out great, and that's, uh, fully.
Yes, yes.
But, uh, no, it, it's an ongoing effort, and it's a moving target. Some deteriorate faster than others, as you know. But I think it's turning out great overall.
I, I had a meeting with the engineer yesterday. He, he had said he'd be here today, but, you know, we, we had these, like I said, district threat partners, who we, we tried to put all these through. Some may slip through, you know, because of expediency of time, but they are waiting on these, so you'll get the, the sign on today.
So I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line number eighteen, Discussion Act to Approve a Change Order for the Texas Water Development Board, FIM, Number Four Zero Zero Four Eight Railroad Detention Pond Project in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents, thirty-five cents action required.
This is, uh, another, uh, project, because those others were together, except they were divided in east and west. This is completely separate. This is our railroad detention pond, and, uh, it's Project, uh, Four Hundred Forty-eight. Uh, a lot of people can see it, they're, they're excavating right here along Business, uh, by Wood Street. It's, uh, what they call, it's going to be under substantial provision. This change order comes into effect because they have to construct, uh, a, a ramp, so to speak, so that we can drive down there to maintain it.
And it's dry?
Yes, sir. Yeah, right now it can't do.
Or you just get a suddenly.
Yeah, you get a sub. No, it's, it's not really that deep. But yes, when it's drier, uh, to, to control the vegetation, uh, and excavating, we have to. So it's partly that, that's the biggest part, because they're going to lay some kind of concrete type of turret to get down and, and get it at the right grade. The other thing we did, we put, uh, we put three gates up on, on three different corners of it, along Wood, along Washington, and then along the business by the old entrance to the complex. There's going to be large twelve-foot gates and then several feet of fence along that to, to, to prevent, uh, and signage of no trespassing and things like that, identify it as an area to keep out of.
On the, um, on the pond itself, uh, some of the retention ponds, especially in San Jose limits, they have like a plastic liner to control the vegetation? Like anything like that going?
They didn't, they didn't put that in as part of that. It's, uh, it's just a normal process of when it's empty, they'll, you know, we'll mow it. It doesn't necessarily have to be clear, all vegetation, once that, once that vegetation gets underwater, it dies, is part of the normal process. More of the issue is going to be on the banks, because some of it has brick rack, and then some of it has, has, uh, just, just dirt, and it's steep. So, um, we'll be using some, uh, you know, some type of authorized, you know, chemicals to try to keep some of it. But you do want some vegetation there to keep the erosion down. So, that's why we purchased, ran through last month, the, uh, last week, the, the boom mower that we're purchasing, that's going to help maintain it. Anyway, that's, and, and it's also, we're well within budget on that. Well within.
So I actually have a boom mower also, so I finally got it fixed. I'll be able to help out.
Boom mower. It, it's going to be a chore.
I know, I gotta go to precinct three now and help them out there. So what's your approval? I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz. Approve, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line number nineteen, Approve Action to Deobligate, Deobligate Remaining Balance of, uh, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and forty cents from ARPA Number Twenty-Two Sixty-Seven, Fund One Fourteen, American Rescue Plan Act, four advertisement action required.
I approach, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, do you feel just a?
Press that?
Yes, sir, please. Yes, sir. So it's, uh, around that time, Judge and Commissioners, where we're ready to close out Fund One One Four under the American Rescue Plan Act. And so, um, we will no longer be procuring, um, projects, ARPA projects. And so therefore, um, we have worked, um, several hours, both with our, uh, project manager, Mrs. Didi Adesemenez, and along with Ms. Carmen Maldonado. And of course, uh, both Francis and Clarissa, who were hired to assist us with this program. And again, the committee, who's played a, a big part in all the business that we do with the American Rescue Plan Act, Los County Program. And Mrs. Inoosa, this last time also a dinner meeting, we're very grateful. And we continue to work together as a team so that we can be very prepared, um, to, um, not necessarily close out, but we refer to a mini-closeout, because as you are aware, Judge, um, honored by December thirtieth, we're hoping it's already here. Uh, we do have to already report all the spending under the Fund One One Four. And that's what all the items that I will present before the court this morning is in reference to that. And that's, this is the first one, which is for advertising. We will no longer be advertising for the American Rescue Plan Act projects. This is what was in that.
Okay. And, and so, um, you know, just in general, Commissioner, what I had mentioned, uh, we all, and Jessica already on, is that, you know, for the amount of monies that were provided to us, right, in the team of about four point five.
Yes.
Including the trial, is that we're to work again, right? And I think, Didi, are you on?
Yes, Judge. Good, good morning, I'm on.
So, and, and so the effort here, Commissioner, is going to be to be able to close out with utilizing all of it, if we possibly can. But my comment, and maybe I'm out of line here, is that if we're of, you know, ten, fifteen, five thou- five thousand, either over or short, you know, I'm okay with it. Because in, throughout this past couple of years, I recognize and acknowledge that we have to abide by all guidelines and regulations. And so, uh, and on the other, I'll say this, and I'm speaking for myself, is that if between today and the end of the year, uh, we need to, to have a special meeting specific for this, I hope that you agree with me, you all for it. Because the effort is indeed what I just said, is let's utilize all that we can, uh, to be able to take advantage of it. Which I think overall, you know, uh, you guys, the committee, uh, department heads, or, you know, Jessica and your staff, Francis, and, and the DA, and, and the Carmen have done a, a good job, Didi. Uh, in, in trying to, to make this thing work as best as possible. Now, is there turbulence? Yes, there is. There is turbulence, because to begin with, this was a very, um, uncommon, uh, type of grant.
Right.
And I'll start with this, uh, Didi. We received the money upfront. You know, normally you could do that with grants, you know? And so, uh, in, anyway, um, so I, I'll just stop there. I know we need to move forward. We've got a lot, uh, line items to, to address.
Need a motion? Uh, make a motion to approve to deobligate remaining balance of seven fourteen dollars and forty cents from ARPA, Number Two Two Six Seven for ARPA Advertising from Fund One One Four, American Rescue Plan Act.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Judge.
Yes.
Just a reminder, we have an addendum number one, identity.
Thank you for bringing, I had, I forgot. Let's do one more, and then we'll come to it. Uh, line item number twenty, the Limpreget. Uh, Approve Action to Deobligate Remaining Balance of Twelve Dollars and Fifty-Two Cent from ARPA Number Twenty-Two Sixty-One. Uh, Shuck File from, uh, County Clerk's Department, action required.
Yes, sir. If I may add, right there, um, just, there will be an edit, and it's already on the motion. Um, right here in the Shuck Files, it's scanning and indexing. Even though you, the court approved for both offices to have their records by Miriam, um, scan, well, it's, it's Shuck Files is, uh, it's, that's for the district clerk, but for the county clerk, it is scanning and indexing. So the language has to mirror for auditing purposes in the U.S. Treasury.
Approved.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve to deobligate remaining balance of Twelve Dollars and Fifty-Two Cent from ARPA, Number Two Two Six One, scanning and indexing, land record for county clerk, office from Fund One One Four, American Rescue Plan Act.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, the, uh, addendum has to do with this. I'm just going to keep going. Line item number twenty-one, Consideration Possible Action to Approve Change Order Number Three for the ARPA Parking Lot Improvement, uh, ARPA Number Twenty-Three Seventy-Nine, Possible Action Required.
Yes, sir. And this is, again, going back as we're completing the, the parking lot, I hope that the, the court is pleased. I think it looks, it's beautiful. Um, so, the, the, there was the service, as you know, the scope of work was the installation of the light pole.
Mm-hmm.
And again, that's what this change order is for. Uh, we're going to have a decrease of five hundred dollars for the total balance. And with that, we're going to have the, including the change order, the balance, or the, the, the total amount for the project will be two hundred twenty-one thousand thirty dollars even.
Okay. And I will turn to.
Approve Change Order Number Three to Decrease the Total Amount of Five Hundred Dollars for ARPA Number Twenty-Three Seventy-Nine Parking Lot Improvement from Fund One One Four, American Rescue Plan Act.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tiñera. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty-two, Discussion Consideration to Approve Memorandum of Understanding, MOU Obligating Eighty-Six Thousand Six Hundred Seventy-Three Dollars and Fifty-Two Cents from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Funds for the Personnel Salary. What is it coming on the Church Office, ARPA Assistant, ARPA Number Twenty-Two Oh Three Project, action required.
Yes, sir. So here, uh, as you, um, I will, just a kind reminder that back in the spring of twenty twenty-four, for the interim reports, the U.S. Treasury, the court approved salaries of, for the personnel positions remaining under the American Rescue Plan Act, funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and that was, uh, the County Auditor's Office and to include your office, or the County Judges Administration. Uh, the purpose of this memorandum, it serves the purpose that this is a continuation, because we are closing Fund One One Four. Uh, this is just part in order to be in compliance with the U.S. Treasury guidelines by the guidance of our grant administrator and, um, program manager. Uh, this is something that Mrs. Inoosa also was very helpful in, in guiding us. So she reviewed it, um, and any questions, she's here with us today. But, uh, Mrs. Ms. Maldonado and our project manager, Ms. Adesemenez, and our team, as of yesterday, after five, we, uh, these are the true numbers, sir, that we're going to be reporting to the U.S. Treasury.
Okay. Make a motion to approve memorandum of, uh, understanding, MOU for ARPA Number Two Two Zero Three, Attorney's Office Personnel, ARPA Account Payable Assistant Salary, the total amount of one hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, eighty-one cents, obligated to the project through December thirty-third of twenty twenty-six.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty-three, um, Discussion Consideration to Approve Memorandum of Understanding Obligating Fifty-Five Thousand Six Hundred Sixteen Dollars and Fifty-Two Cent from the American Rescue Plan Act Funds, Voided Personnel Salary, What is the County Judge's Administrative Assistance, ARPA Twenty-Two Zero Four Project Action Required? This is for Francis.
Yes, this is for the administration. Again, some of the, the, the numbers, uh, the totals that you may see on the agenda requests, um, in respect to processing the agenda on a timing manner, uh, there were some calculations. So the, the correct amount would be noted in the recommended motion.
Um, Make a motion to approve memorandum of understanding, MOU for ARPA Number Two Two Zero Four, Judges' Administration Personnel, ARPA, ARPA Administrative Assistant Salary for the total amount of one fifty-six, six eighty-five point five eight, obligated to the project through December thirty-third of twenty twenty-six.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty-four, Discussion Act to Correct, Approved Purchase Amount of ARPA Fund One Fourteen Project Twenty-Four Eighty-Nine, Motion Approved on November fourteenth of twenty twenty-four, on Agenda Number Forty-Two from six hun- six thousand twenty-five, uh, to seven hundred, oh, sorry, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five, and eighty-seven dollars and five cents to five hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents, action required.
Yes, sir. And this is just to correct, it was human error on behalf of our office, uh, when we did, um, submit the, the recommended motions and on the, on the date that has been stated, um, from that previous, uh, Commissioner's Court meeting.
Right.
And, uh, it's just, we have to correct it, sir, for, to be in compliance with
Right.
the guidelines.
So, so it was less than?
Yes, sir. It was a costly.
What? Approve to Correct Motion Approved on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, Agenda Line Item Number Forty-Two for ARPA, Number Twenty-Forty-Nine, Sheriff's Office, Lead Patrol Vehicle for the total amount of six hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and five cents to a total amount of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three and forty cents from Fund One One Four, American Rescue Plan Act. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tiñera, second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-five, Approve Action to Deobligate Remaining Balance of Five Cents, ARPA Project Precinct Number One, uh, Number Two 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 Three, Road Improvement from, from Fund Balance One Fourteen, American Rescue Plan Act, action required. Do you intend motion?
Yes, sir. Uh, Make a motion to approve to deobligate Remaining Balance of Five Cents, One Zero Five, from ARPA Number Two 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 Three, for Precinct One, Road Improvements from One Fourteen, from Fund One Fourteen, American Rescue Plan Act.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sia, second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more, uh, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Approve and, and Action to Deobligate Total Amount of Twenty-Nine Thousand One Hundred Seventy Dollars from ARPA Project Twenty-Three Seventy-Nine Parking Lot from Pond One Fourteen, American Rescue Plan Act, action required.
Make a motion to approve to deobligate Remaining Balance of Twenty-Nine Thousand One Seventy from ARPA Number Two Three Seven Nine Parking Lot Improvement from Pond One One Four, American Rescue Plan Act.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Tiñera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. And I'll oppose, same sign. Uh, at this time, Commissioner's, let's go to, to the addendum, so I'll forget. It is, uh, notice was, uh, here I posted, and, uh, Commissioner's Court would add an addendum number one, Thursday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at eleven fifteen A.M. to County District, South, Commissioner's Court, where my car's in Main Street in Rambleau, Texas, seven eight five eight zero. at eleven fifteen AM, the county sheriff's, Commissioner's Court, when passing situation, Main Street in Rambo, Texas, seven eight five eight zero. We go to line item number one, approval and action to deobligate remaining balance of fifty-six thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty cents from ARPA Project Twenty-Fourty-Nine, from Sheriff's Office Fleet, from Fund One Fourteen, American Rescue Plan Act, action required.
So, so move, make a motion, oh, did you need a motion, yes, sir? Make a motion to approve to deobligate remaining balance of fifty-six thousand four seventy-six and sixty cents from ARPA, number two-four-eight-nine, Sheriff's Office, fleet patrol vehicles, from Fund One One Four, American Rescue Plan Act.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion?
This is tied to twenty-fourth, line item twenty-fourth? Is it, I think, yes?
Yes, I, I apologize, any cross-reference, yes, it is, sir.
Okay. The, the vehicle, do, do you know the vendor has ordered the vehicles, or are we still waiting on this?
All the paperwork has been provided to the vendor to order the vehicles, since we have been notified that the vehicles have been...
I have a motion and a second, no discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. With that, we'll adjourn the addendum and go to... We'll go to line item number twenty-seven, the regular agenda of the regular meeting. Line item number twenty-seven, presentation of status report for the American Rescue Plan Act, number one fourteen.
Yes, sir, I'm requesting from the court that I can please table the item and present it on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. By then, we would have already met with our auditor to finalize all the expenses and that way I can present to you an accurate report.
Okay, this is, okay, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, I may present it on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
And you, and I know you will very efficiently include the, the amount of deobligations, amounts that were...
That was the plan, sir, to present to the court today, all the projects that were approved, obligated, expense, and the balance. And that's why today we're deobligating. And then also the current and ongoing projects. You also have the LATCF fund, that you also have a balance that, you know, I do want to confirm with our auditor, that before we present to the court. So on the thirtieth, you'll have maybe a few, or maybe, hopefully, maybe one, a few. A few that we still have to deobligate, and then you will obligate, so that we can zero out and balance out. And our project manager and county auditor will meet with our, our team to finalize that and present it to you, and then present it to the US Treasury via submission.
It will include that amount for the, I guess, for the ambulance, is that what it was?
It will include it, sir. We will provide all that information to you. May I be excused?
So move the tables?
Or just the presentation?
Oh, we didn't say the table, I thought.
Did he, before I let you go, is there anything you want to comment?
Yes, good, good afternoon, or still morning, I want to say a good morning to everybody, thank you. I want to thank your, your team, Judge, for going above and beyond. I know, like you mentioned earlier, this is a different funding. You didn't apply for it, the county didn't apply for it, you didn't have to go to Matthew Pratt. You woke up one day and they asked you, do you want to do that? I do want to thank you as the judge for taking your time to really looking into all these projects. At the very beginning, it was an entering process. And so I want to thank you, and one more thing, I also want to thank, I will not be here the next, Commissioner's Court, Commissioner Seda for all your support and understanding how, you know, federal funds work. And what things that I will take from you, listening to you as a fortress, let's just do it right. And, you know, being around so many elected officials, and I can see that you have a passion for your county. And I know wherever you go, you're gonna continue, and you have left a legacy in your county. And I had just been working with you for about three years, so enjoy your, your next chapter in life, Commissioner Seda. And I appreciate everything you've done, working with Grantworth and myself.
Well, thank you, you're welcome.
All right, Maydi, thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Have a great day. Goodbye.
Bye. May I be excused, sir?
Yes. So we go to line item twenty-eight, discussion, to approve the twenty twenty-five Willis County Holiday Schedule, action required. Commissioners, I think, I think we'll send you all this, ahead of time, you can look at it. I don't know if there's any comments or questions as far as what you...
I guess I didn't look yet.
I looked, I think, the same. So move to project?
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz to approve, the schedule submitted. For twenty twenty-five, can I entertain a second?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-nine, approval of monthly reports.
I'm not hearing. Is that my time? So move to project?
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz to approve the monthly report, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number thirty, approval of travel request.
Travel, what? Move to travel. Here we fall. How are these? Is it for two together?
Okay, I, I, I know there's... It's three.
What, we have one?
There's three of them, yeah. Okay, I'll read it out, Commissioner, travel request for December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Travel request for Justice of Peace Precinct One, Judge Jessica Rosas, to attend the twenty-hour Justice of Peace in Corpus Christi, Texas on January twelfth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Action required. Travel request for Chief Juvenile Provision Officer Rabul Garza to attend the twenty twenty-five Chief Summit on January nineteenth through the twenty-second of twenty twenty-five in Fredericksburg, Texas. And Elizabeth Galván to attend that, to attend that handle with care training held on February twelfth, eleven and twelve, twenty twenty-five in Cedar Park, Texas. Texas Juvenile Justice Department funding will be used to satisfy these travel expenses, action required. Number three, travel request for Willis County Sheriff's Office Telecommunicator, uh, uh, Anisa, Anisa?
Anisa.
Anisa, Anisa, sorry, Ms. Bermeja. Bermeja, to complete the mandatory public safety telecommunicator online course before March twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, action required.
What's that?
I have a motion by Commissioner Seda to approve, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner De La Paz, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number thirty-one, approval of Treasurer's Report.
Judge, this is the original.
Oh, sorry. Close it?
Yeah, just the original, the treasurer.
The guy who has the, 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 I don't know, I don't know. No, no, yeah.
So move to project?
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz to approve the Treasurer's Report. Can I, can I second?
Thirty.
Second by Commissioner Edina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number thirty-two, approval of budget amendment.
You didn't give it to me. Is it him, did you see?
Yes. Well, he said this.
Okay.
I have four, go together.
Four?
Yeah. Then we go ahead and...
All right.
So the first one is for the Administration Department. And basically, we're, we're moving funding that was approved during budget workshops, but for some reason, during the, the budget amount, it wasn't, the formula didn't pick up the amount, and it's only for two thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. And we have Constable Precinct Four, and they're just moving in and out funding within the line items presented. And then we have Justice of the Peace, this is where the funding will come or will go to. So it will be for her temp personnel line item, which the court had already, you know, discussed and approved during budget workshops to fund her that money. So the French is for taking care of within the budget, I just don't, since this was a new line item for her department. When I, I did the budget, it just didn't ca- catch the formula, and the two thousand one hundred and ten dollars didn't, you know, pick up. And I have a dollar of rounding, so I might as well take care of it now. And then last but not least, Precinct Four, it's an in and out movement of funding as presented.
Commissioner, let me just, I'm gonna come in real quick, because you know, you know, we approve budget amendments. And, you know, I say ninety-nine percent of the time is budget amendments that are within budgets, right?
Yes.
The, the number remains the same. On occasion, there's, there's budget amendments that need a special look when it goes from one department to another, such as in this case. So what it was, just your, first year, you remember, is that JP One, Rosas asked for temporary help to overlap uh, to train, and it wasn't that amount, it was minimal. I don't know if they win in parts, time, it was six week, wasn't it?
For six weeks, huh?
For six weeks. So anyway, that's what the, the system didn't pick up on the, the payroll, and just so you know. It, it just so happens that it's, it's coming from the contingency, which is in the administration. But nonetheless, that's what it is. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
I do, go.
I have a motion by Commissioner Seda to approve, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we go to line item... We go to line item number thirty-three, approval of text collector's report. Do we have? Liz? No, I'll pay out, I'll pay out, I'll pay out.
Yes, Wendy.
No, I thought about Liz Bumhard, not you. Liz, the cheerleader? Cheer, the beer? Give us a...
Cheese.
Nah, nah, nah.
I just said there is one.
I got one. Oh, okay. I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz to approve, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. We don't sign the due...
No, did.
I have to say. But we, but we do need it.
Yes, I do.
Line item thirty-four, review of special claims.
The effect of payments. If I come in, you can, you know, the line in, outside of hard...
Let's just review. Line item number twenty-three, thirty-five is monthly report over to county jail.
Yeah.
There's no...
Uh, yes, special...
I'm sorry. Looks like the county is at seventy-seven.
Yeah. I, well, I was gonna say, I think I remember seventy-five, but I didn't see that last one.
Yeah, it's got seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Well, I guess come in the DA's office and the sheriff's office. Down to seventy-seven?
Well, during the holidays, you know, the numbers go up a little bit, but... And then the, the meal contract started this Monday, Judge.
Yes, I, I, I got that pleasant response, that it started Monday.
Yes, yes.
One of the things in order to talk...
So it should be, it, it's going off of this number, just to let you know, so...
Well, that's, that's a thing that Ms. Malonado, Ms. Malonado, I had looked at, I had talked about, we're gonna talk about on the eighteen.
Yes.
Is that for over a year, they have consistently been ordering just ninety-five trays. And when you have a seventy-seven count, say you order a few extra, and eighty, and that's fifteen extra trays, three times a day, at two something a day, adds up quick. So I need to make sure they're following their actual count.
Right.
That's, had been done in the past, because it makes a difference, a big difference.
The contract and the agreement is for, for inmates, and it's for the daily count for inmates, that's how we, how it was structured, Judge.
Not for officers?
No, it's just inmates only, because the way the, the way the agreement was, was inmates only, so we, we stuck with the principle, the, the way it was intended for, just inmates only.
I think they had just, for some reason, just always ordered ninety-five, so at least for the last seven, eight months, it's the council been below that. So they need to be watching that, we'll, we'll remind them during the December, eighteen.
All right, and then we go to monthly employee overtime report. On that one, I, I know we, we've had two full months, right, in, in this year. We need to analyze, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing it dropping after this check in from the, on the jail side, Commissioner. Just simply not having to go all the way to Knoxville two or three times a day, should, should help.
Big time. Just looking at it, you're starting on page three, most of it looks pretty, the, the grant related overtime.
If you go to page nine, that's where the stuff is.
There's kind of a lot of pretty...
We'll have discussion on that, and also on the, the radio situation. I'm watching. All right, okay, so then, is, is there not any more comments or questions on thirty-six? We go to thirty-seven, executive session, confirmed measures, court legal counsel regarding pending contemplated litigation and non-negotiations involving counties imposing interest pursuant to ETC Gamma Code Section five by one, code number seven one, A and two. And deliberation regarding pending contemplated litigation, negotiation involving counties imposing interest pursuant to ETC Gamma Code Section five by one, code number seven one, A and two. Notes is there, anything?
I, not, not that I need to raise, Judge, I don't know if there's anything that, that you or the commissioners need to raise.
Okay.
At this, for this one.
Yeah, and, and not that, not that I'm gonna refer to going into any deeper discussion, but we, a store in South Texas ISD, that's what you did before.
Oh, okay.
And I would just, there's no update on...
Nothing, I haven't, I don't have anything new to report. I'll, I'll look at getting that information and... that information and, and having that for you the end of this month or early next month.
Uh, so there's none, can I entertain a motion on line item thirty-eight, or table line item thirty-seven, thirty-eight?
So.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, any more discussion? All in favor, signature by President A nine, and all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item thirty-nine, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner, I'll pass.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor, signature by President A nine.